Called the November the 26, 2012 meeting, regular meeting of the Frankfurt Board of Commission to Order. We'd like to ask everyone to please stand for an indication by Reverend Derek Kaitron at the Cornerstone Nazarene Church and then remain standing for the page of leaders with flag. Reverend Kaitron.
I pray, thank you Father for this beautiful day you've given to us, a day that reflects your goodness and your faithfulness and your love for us. I pray specifically now that your blessing would reside in this place and upon these leaders for this community. I ask God that you grant them wisdom and insight, discernment, and direction for any and every affair. Bless this great city that we have. May everything that is said and done glorify you and help our people. In the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Kaitron, thank you very much.
I always think about the whole age. World's for it, but I think about the...
Would the clerk please hold the robe?
Mr. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Haddon.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. May.
Here.
Mayor Graham.
Okay, next item, minutes, we've had access to the minutes for free time. Do you have a motion for opinion to extend to the minutes?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Turner, do you have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I saw Bill's hand shoot out.
Discussion, please call the robe.
Mr. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mayor Graham.
Yes, so the minutes are for October 27, 2012, regular meeting are approved. Next is ceremony items, and Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We're recognizing two employees who are retiring. The first is Cecil Graves, Public Works Tech III, retiring with 21 years and six months of service, and he's not in attendance tonight. The second is Jeff Hackmark, Director of Public Works, retiring with 20 years of service after failing, as most engineers try, to figure out how to make water run uphill. So, I guess you couldn't answer that question, you're gonna move on to greener pastures, right?
Other pastures.
Other pastures, alright, there you go. Yes, you would. Of course, Jeff's been with us for 20 years and is the Director of Public Works, is in charge of sanitation, transit, streets. What else do you have? Oh, the garage?
Garage, buildings.
Buildings.
And flood wall.
And flood wall. Has many different hats to wear and has worn them with a great amount of grace over the years. In fact, a citizen came in to congratulate him just a few minutes ago, and she said that she wanted to congratulate him for all the stuff that he's put up with. He's probably the only public works director that ever had a dead cat put at his door, so, and she brought it to him, so. So Jeff, you've put up with a lot in your time and you've done it very well, so, thank you.
Jeff, buddy, this is your pack, take within treasure for your 20 years here, but we certainly appreciate what you've done. I've enjoyed working with you, this for you, and wish you well, buddy.
Thank you all very much. And Frankfurt's been a wonderful town for work in and live in, and I'll definitely miss Frankfurt. I'll be back very often and come down and see everybody, and I will miss everybody, but I appreciate it very much, Mayor. It's been a wonderful place to work, and thank you all, Commission, for the support during my tenure, and I really appreciate it, and it's been a wonderful career here. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Within members of the Commission, I'd like to make a comment.
Good, thank you, Mayor. Having served with Jeff for these years, I can personally attest to the many nights that he would have to be up with dealing with storms or other types of emergencies. He was always available. I know that he probably got sick of me calling on his cellphone at times while I was mayor, and I'm sure you've done the same thing, Mayor, to check up on things, and these folks, of course, they will get by, but Jeff's leaving some big shoes to fill, and we certainly appreciate the 20 years of service that you've put in. Part of that was as Assistant Director under former Public Works Director, but you've done a tremendous job. We really appreciate all the changes that you've been able to make in your department, and we look forward to your future contributions, and we will always welcome you back with open arms, and just great success will come your way in your career. And I know you're gonna get to spend more time with your kids, so God bless you.
Well, two years ago when I came on the Commission, we had the bright idea of doing a pay-as-you-throw-a-garbage program, and I know that Jeff is curious, the City Manager has said, wears a lot of hats around here, but I think he's probably sick of talking trash here over the last two years, but I wanted to point out the magnitude of Jeff's work, and he has been so cooperative with this Commission and working with us during that process, giving us research and information on various solid waste systems throughout the country. And the magnitude of this reform is that it probably was one of the biggest reforms in my lifetime in living in the city of Frankfurt, and we were able to do it pretty doggone good considering the magnitude and how many people it affected and how quickly we worked to get it done. So Jeff, I wanted to thank you so much for all of your help over the last two years. Wish you the absolute best in the future, and I look forward to seeing you out downtown or someplace around town soon. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, Jeff.
I hope you enjoy all this free time and that your kids get sick of seeing you now. Enjoy. Thank you for everything, Jeff, and I'm sure the department and everyone else will certainly miss you and your character.
Thank you, Commissioner, very much. Yeah, thanks for everything, Jeff. I know this is a family move for you, and I'm really happy for you. Well, thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
If it's appropriate, I'd like to introduce a good friend. He's a great public servant. He's served in the Kentucky Legislature representing the Senate District. It's changed since he was there, but from Henderson, Kentucky, then he went on to become Mayor of Henderson, Kentucky, and now serves as Executive for the Kentucky Charitable Gaming Commission or organization?
I didn't know.
But anyway, Senator Henry Lackey, I think you might have served...
I dismissed him.
Dismissed him. Glad to see, one of our fine residents of Kentucky.
Right. Yeah, it's great. Yeah, we're glad to have you here. Doc, right now. You've got, wait, yes, somebody just...
Okay, we have one more recognition. We'd like to recognize, Jeff, you might want to come back up for this one. Recognize Daniel Dos of Public Works Street Department. You better come up too, Daniel, for winning the AWPA State Backhoe Competition. Jeff, if you would, tell us a little bit about the competition and some of the things they had to do. It was pretty interesting to see the slideshow that they did.
Frankfurt participates in members of American Public Works Association, and that's an organization that promotes employees' training and gives employees opportunities to compete for, in this case, a skills competition. And back in October, we had our annual state meeting in Louisville, and the Mayor and Chief Will Hoyt came up for our annual banquet, and before the banquet, Frankfurt competed in our state rodeo, and we had a team of truck drivers for snowplow, and then Daniel participated for backhoe competition. And out of the four regions that competed for the state, Daniel won the backhoe competition this year, and so he's the number-one backhoe operator in the state of Kentucky. And he received the first-place plaque from the competition, and so we invited him to the City Commission meeting tonight to be recognized for his very good work, and we're very lucky to have his skill set, and it's nice to get recognized there. Good job, Mayor.
I appreciate you guys letting us be able to compete in stuff like this and talk with other people in the state of Kentucky, that way we can get ideas how to do our job better, so thank y'all for everything y'all do for us.
We thank you, and all your group does such good work, and I know you've been in competition before, and you do pretty well, don't we?
Yeah, we do. We do really good.
There's a lot to say for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, now we're down to citizens' comments, and the procedure we have is that any citizen can come forth and address the Commission on any topic, and we'd like to request that you limit your comments to around five minutes, and so please come to the microphone, identify yourself, okay?
Hi there. I was hoping I could follow Ms. Gibbs and I wouldn't be so nervous. My name is Debbie Bramlich. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I wish that I could have, this issue would have been addressed before and it wouldn't be necessary for me to be here. I also thought I had only two minutes to speak, so you have an unabridged copy of what I'm going to say. So if you want to lay your papers down, children, my one teacher would never pass our papers out till she was finished speaking, because we wouldn't stop looking at them. Okay, I'm a resident of Frankfurt, as you know, until a few months ago. For six years, I was a conscientious and loyal employee in the City of Frankfurt Park Department. I'm here now to address unfinished business, and I ask that now that the election is over, you as a City Commission will insist that the investigation into the unethical incident initiated by Park's co-director Jim Parrish on September 7 of this year, of which I was the innocent target, that this investigation be completed, and appropriate disciplinary action taken against all those who were complicit in the matter. Paperwork you have there shows that it took me almost four weeks to get to the bottom of this, which is just unconscionable. Copies of the incomplete investigation report are here for all of you, though I know some of you have already seen it, and additional copies are given to the city clerk to forward to the Ethics Commissioner and to the Commissioners-elect. Extra copies are on the table at the rear for the public. This attempt to entrap me and have me wrongfully arrested was a blatant vindictive and unethical act of retaliation for my whistleblowing regarding providing data documenting false time sheets and unsafe workplace practices within the Park Departments, for which at least two seasonal employees received unpaid suspension, while their bosses, who signed off on their cards, got nothing. This was also retaliation for my having filed a claim with the EEOC for my wrongful termination. Specifically, I'm asking, on completion of this investigation, I expect that you and/or the newly seated Commission will, number one, refer this matter to the Ethics Commission, insist on the resignation of Park's co-director Jim Parrish for obvious employee misconduct, including but not necessarily limited to violation of Employee Conduct and Work Rules 3.4B, numbers 3, 7, 12, 14, and 17. Copies of all that are attached for you. Abuse of power and authority certainly stands out, number 14. Insist that the Police Department, and I hope the Chief is listening, file charges against Mr. Parrish for filing a false report to the police. According to Rick Sparks, the county attorney, only the Police Department can file these charges because it is a criminal matter. My only recourse for this false report, this harassment, lies in civil court for defamation of character and harassment. I hate to add this, but reprimand Officer Wells for his complicity in this matter by aiding and abetting Mr. Parrish in this quest, disregarding protocol, knowingly circumventing regular department procedures, and acting on Mr. Parrish's undocumented allegations without question. Number four, remove Chief of Police Will Hoyt as interim City Manager, to ensure that there will be no further conflict of interests as he attempts to wear two hats, and I would suggest unsuccessfully. The Betty Burris-Snafu and this matter are surely enough by now. And last, though it's too late for me, adopt a whistleblower ordinance to protect city employees from retaliation and harassment, both during their employ and after dismissal and resignation. Folks, it's time for an end to nepotism, and you sure need to review that policy, cronyism, and good old boys rule. We are the capital city of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, something to be proud of. We should be holding ourselves to the highest possible standards, exemplifying honest, open, transparent, and ethical government, instead of continuing to just look the other way. I, in the meantime, now spend all of my days in Frankfurt looking over my shoulder. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bramlich. Can I make any one of us make this down? Mr. Wilder.
I'm not gonna delve too deeply into this, except to say that, well, just to address some of these recommendations, I do agree that whistleblower ordinance is needed to protect city employees from retaliation for whistleblowing, and that's something that we directed staff to prepare a first reading of an ordinance change to that effect. I was expecting we would have the first reading today, but I'm guessing that'll be ready next month. Got it right here. Oh, we got it. Great. Thank you. I mean, there are a couple of big terms thrown around here, and without getting too deep into the details, I mean, I haven't reviewed the facts of the matter. I'm not convinced that this is a matter for the Ethics Board. I mean, I certainly wouldn't object to them taking a look at it, but I don't think there's any denying that the harassment that took place was unethical by any standards of decency, but to run afoul of our ethics ordinance, somebody has to be doing something to directly benefit themselves or their families, and I don't believe that was at play here. It was just typical harassment. I guess I'll make one note. We don't need to talk about this for too long.
And if I may, just because we have pending litigation with Ms. Bramlich, where she has appealed her termination as a city employee and has a case pending before the Unemployment Insurance Claims Appeals Branch, and she's also filed an EEOC complaint against the city as the result of her termination, I would recommend against discussing factual details.
Sure. I guess I'll just make one request. I'll continue to express confidence in Chief Will Hoyt. Well, I would be, I guess I would be inclined to ask F. to follow up on the second recommendation, that we do at least look into whether or not charges for filing a false report are valid here. That's all.
Mr. Moore, now, the first one was the question that this Commission referred this to the Ethics, now, the individual referred that to the Ethics Commission, does it not? I mean, that'd be her responsibility, not our?
If Ms. Bramlich feels that the Ethics Code was violated, then it would be her responsibility to file the complaint with the city clerk or with the Chairperson of the Ethics Commission, and that's Don Hale.
Right. Very good. Thank you. Any comments to make this time? Okay. Okay, any other citizen comment this time?
Mayor and members of the City Commission, I'm Henry Lackey, former Mayor of the City of Henderson, former City Commissioner in Henderson, former Kentucky State Senator, and now a permanent resident of Frankfurt, Kentucky. I live at 408 Lindsey Avenue, and one thing I need about city government is always a lot of peaks and valleys in terms of emotion. You know, great things, but I'm about ready to say about you, preceded the things that have been a little bit on the rough side, and I'm sure there'll be other valleys and more peaks to come. I'll remind you what Speaker of the House, Greg Stumble, always says when you stand before a government body, the five Bs. He said, "Be brief, brother, be brief." So I won't take up too much of your time. I do think many times that residents do come before this City Commission generally with complaints about something. That was my experience in the four years I was Mayor of Henderson, which ended 2006. I come before you as a citizen of Frankfurt and letting you know that I think the people in this town get a real fair shake for their buck. Henderson has a lot of similarities with Frankfurt. We're similar in size, about 30,000, somewhere around there. You have the plant board, citizens get one bill, and then a separate one from Columbia Gas. In our, my hometown of Henderson, where I was born and raised, my dad happened to be the Mayor of Henderson also, we have a similar thing where we own the electric power plant, and we're not in the communication business. So the citizens of Henderson get one bill, too, but we are not in the cable or in that aspect of telecom or the telephone company, for that matter. But there are a lot of similarities in terms of the services that are rendered by both cities. I'm here to tell you that my experience of being here four and a half years in Governor Beshear's administration, I find that all your agencies do a terrific job. Police, fire, particularly sanitation, this gentleman leaving Public Works, I don't know if you know Exor Royster, but he's about ready to leave after, or he already has left after about 30, 35 years, Public Works Director in Henderson. You know, I live up on a steep hill. I think you know where Lindsey Avenue is. Try to accomplish that hill sometime when no one ever scraped it down. It's a real challenge going up or coming down. And the Public Works Department is there at least once every morning when it snows, and sometimes two or three. I just found that amazing that they would take a side street like that, and it's because of the concern of someone getting hurt, some type of automobile accident. I think your staff here in the city are friendly, very, very helpful, and I know some of you are leaving. I didn't want to come before the election, but I didn't want anybody to know, actually, I only really know two of you, and that's the Mayor and Bill May. I knew Bill back, should I say, 30 years ago, I guess, when I was a freshman senator here. So I didn't want to get in that crossfire of a political campaign. I'm just here to tell you, those who are leaving here, you and others before you have done a wonderful job. You really have. And yeah, I know you've had your difference over the trash pickup and all that type of thing, and I could argue both sides of that, probably pretty successful, but I think you've done a terrific job. Obviously, you have a wonderful City Manager, does his job well. I do know Bob Moore down there on the end, Robert, I know him from South Frankfurt Presbyterian Church near town. That's all I had to say, Mayor. I'm honored to live here, and if the Governor still wants me for the next three years or so, I'll be around then. I am the Deputy Commissioner of Aviation out of the airport. Let me put in one plug for the airport in this town. It's a unique arrangement of management and ownership of airports across the state. We inspect 54 general aviation airports in the state. I just drove in here on the way back to the office from Cincinnati, Ohio, the Greater Cincinnati Airport of Beaufort, Kentucky. Across the state, there's all types of makeups of ownership and operations of general aviation airports. Frankfurt is a GA airport, where Cincinnati is what we call a Part 139, a major carrier, just like Stanford, just like Bluegrass. But it's interesting to note that the Commonwealth of Kentucky owns four airports, and one of them is the Frankfurt Airport. Citizens of the state also own Kentucky Dam, Lake Barkley, and Rough River. We have airports at those three state parks. But you have a lot to be proud of in this airport in Frankfurt. I don't think anybody really has a full understanding of how much industrial growth has come about for that airport. If you doubt in particular how valuable that airport is, come out there during the legislative session and see how many $25 million airplanes land there in New York or Chicago, and put on $10,000, $15,000 worth of fuel, and also stay overnight, use the services of your city. So you have a real fine installation to be very, very proud of. Again, I thank you for your service, and I'm honored to be a citizen of Frankfurt.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lackey. Appreciate it very much.
Agreed. Thank you. It's very nice of you.
Good to get a few, Henry, excuse me. I think Mr. Turner wants to say something?
I just want to say thank you, Senator Lackey, for those very nice comments that you made. Really appreciate that, and coming from a fellow public servant, it certainly means a lot. You know what it's like down in the trenches there.
Oh, yeah.
And I want to also thank you for your service, not only to Henderson, but to our great Commonwealth, and welcome to Frankfurt. We hope you have a long stay and enjoy my hometown and the capital city.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Do you have any other citizen comment this time? Okay, next, we turn to ordinances. Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir. Ordinance 4.1, by title and summary, Title and Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 19, 2012 Series, Appropriating the Revenue to be Received by the City of Frankfurt for the Fiscal Year 2012, 2013. Summary, this ordinance amends the City of Frankfurt budget for fiscal year 2012, 2013 to include health care costs to fund the wellness program and to add health care coverage for employee working spouses. Additionally, the amendment provides funding for the infill of the East Frankfurt Pool.
Without objection, we'll accept this as the first reading.
And then, Ordinance 4.2, and this is the first reading as well, by title, and Ordinance Amending Section 100.01 of the City Code of Ordinances Concerning Abandoned Urban Property. Summary, this amendment to Section 100.01 provides for the updating of the list of abandoned urban properties after any appeals have been heard, for notice to the property owner by first-class mail, by posting the property, and by posting on the city's website, for removal from the abandoned urban properties, properties that have been repaired, rehabilitated, or remediated prior to May 1, and for extending the date for filing an appeal to May 31.
Okay, without objection, we will accept first reading for 4.2.
Ordinance 4.3, by title and ordinance concerning fitness for duty requirements for safety employees, and summary is, this ordinance implements the Fit-for-Duty Program, which will allow safety employees to establish the required level of fitness through the job-related physical agility test or the Fit-for-Duty Program in order to provide further incentive to safety employees to maintain fitness standards.
Okay, without objection, we will accept the first reading of Ordinance 4.3.
And Mayor, at the close of the last City Commission meeting, I was requested to prepare a whistleblower ordinance based upon the Commonwealth of Kentucky's whistleblower statute, and I have that for distribution and review. If we could do a first reading, if we could do that now, or we could do it at the tail end of the meeting, so whichever you all prefer.
Want to put it down?
I'm amenable either way.
Just put it down. Get it moving.
Thank you, Robert.
Thanks, Rob. Thanks for staying.
Thanks, Rob. I just had to add that to the agenda.
Well, I think what is added to the agenda, it's not written on there, but maybe out of an abundance of caution, it would make sense.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we add this agenda abstract for the proposed changes to our Section 39.25 through 39.27 of our code of ordinances.
Just as an... to our section 39.25 through 39.27 of our court ordinances, just as an agenda item, since it was, it's not.
If you have a second? I'll second. Okay, call roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Henning?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Brand.
Yes, so it's added to the agenda.
If I could just kind of walk the commission through this, and if it's acceptable, then we can do a first reading. But what I did, of course, is I patterned this off of the whistleblower statute in the pass by the Kentucky General Assembly, and you'll see we have a definition section, employee means a person employed by the city of Frankfurt. Number two, city of Frankfurt means the city of Frankfurt and any person authorized to act on behalf of the city of Frankfurt with respect to formulation of policy or the supervision in managerial capacity of subordinate employees. And I thought it important to include that broader definition of the city of Frankfurt so it was clear that not only could the city of Frankfurt not, not take action against an employee because they've reported wrongdoing, but it would also preclude a supervisor or someone in a managerial capacity from doing so as well. Section 39, proposed section 39.26 contains the provisions indicating that the city of Frankfurt shall not subject to reprisal or directly or indirectly use or threaten to use any official authority or any influence in any manner whatsoever which tends to discourage, et cetera, or discriminate against any employee who in good faith reports, discloses, divulges, or otherwise brings to the attention of the city of Frankfurt or a law enforcement agency or other appropriate body or authority, facts or information relative to a suspected violation of any law or statute, et cetera. Section 2 indicates that the city cannot only, not only is prohibited from discriminating against the reporter, but the city is also prohibited from discriminating against someone who helps the reporter make the report. And then it has section 3, you'll see, and again, this is taken from the state statute, has provisions that state that protect the city so that it can still manage properly the city, and I think those provisions are pretty self-explanatory. It, this ordinance would not prohibit the city from requiring an employee to inform it of an official request made to an agency for information or the substance of testimony made or be made by the employee concerning his or employment with the city of Frankfurt. So, in other words, if an employee is testifying somewhere about wrongdoing on the part of the city or a city employee, then the city can require that employee to not only report that wrongdoing to another body, but also to tell the city as well so that we can take action to ensure that our ordinances and applicable laws are enforced. This ordinance does not allow an employee to just leave his workstation willy-nilly if they're making an allegation of wrongdoing. They still need to follow the normal procedures with respect to following administrative regulations and taking leave at the appropriate time, et cetera. This ordinance, I think, D, section 3D, is fairly important because it, it indicates that the city can take action against an employee if that employee recklessly discloses information which he knows to be untrue or false. And then section 39.27 allows an individual to bring a civil action against the city of Frankfurt for injunctive relief or damages if they feel like there has been action taken against him or her due to the reporting of wrongdoing by an employee. And of course, that's allowed by the state statute as well. I would note that the, that the state statute requires that civil action to be made or filed within 90 days after the occurrence of the alleged violation, and that has been incorporated into this ordinance as well. And the action, of course, would be filed in the Franklin Circuit Court. So again, these provisions were taken from the, from the state whistleblower statute, and I'd certainly be willing to answer any questions that you may have concerned.
Any questions on the part of the board?
This is exactly what I had in mind, pretty boilerplate from the, if anybody compares it against the state statute, they'll see it's, other than some essential changes, it's pretty boilerplate. Thanks a lot, Robert.
Well, if there's none, then we could, without objection, could we just accept this as a first reading?
Why don't I read it by title and then by summary?
Okay.
And that'll be the first reading. By title and ordinance providing protections for employees reporting wrongdoing. And summary, this ordinance prohibits the city of Frankfurt from sanctioning or penalizing employees reporting wrongdoing in the operations of the city of Frankfurt and authorizes the filing of an action to enjoin such sanction or penalty and to recover damages if appropriate.
Okay. Without objection, we will accept this as the first reading. Down to orders, and there being none, resolutions, there being none. Consent calendar. Assistant Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 7.1 is to authorize the mayor to sign a full release of mortgage of property located at 494 Jones Lane. Subsequent to this construction of the Jones Lane project, property owner at 494 Jones Lane signed a promissory note and mortgage has been since paid the amount owed in full. This document will be filed with the Office of the Clerk of Franklin County Court to release the second mortgage. 7.2 is to authorize the mayor to sign a four-year contract on copier leases for police, sewer, and city hall copiers. The current copier leases expire December 2012. The monthly lease payments will come from the various departments' budgets. There were four proposals that were reviewed, and Commonwealth Communications was the winner of the proposal. 7.3 is to authorize, to declare mobile and portable radios and accessories from the fire department as surplus property and authorize their disposal by electronic auction or directly to other government agencies or to be traded in for purchase credit. Mobile and portable radios in the fire department have been replaced, and these radios are no longer of use to the city, but still have some market value. They will be advertised electronically or offered for sale to other Kentucky government agencies. It's 26 mobile units, 71 portables and chargers, three in-car repeaters, and four DC power supplies. 7.4 is to authorize the purchase of 20 mobile data terminals, docks, and power supplies for the police department. This will replace eight-year-old MDPs currently in use and are quickly falling into disrepair. The amount of this will be $74,895, and the money is from the U.S. asset forfeiture account. So no taxpayer money is going out on this, and we received these on the Homeland Security Grant in the beginning. 7.5 is to establish and approve season pass and daily fee rates for Juniper Hill Golf Course. Three years ago, Parks and Rec Department committed to a four-year program to increase annual revenue at the golf course while decreasing annual expenditures. This rate proposal is for increasing the nine-hole cart fee per person from $6 to $7, and 18-hole cart fee per person from $11 to $12. Based on current play levels, this should increase revenue by $10,000. This will keep the golf course on pace toward achieving revenue goals for 2013. 7.6 is authorization to award an engineering contract to Gerdler Associates Incorporated for engineering services to evaluate issues with the old Lawrenceburg Road force main and authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with the project. During inspection of sanitary sewer facilities along Kentucky River, an exposed section of the old Lawrenceburg Road force main was found. This study will evaluate how to remediate the situation and prevent damage to the pipe and prevent subsequent discharge of raw sewage into the river. The total contract amount is not to exceed $10,000. 7.7, purpose of this item is to consider approving the rate schedule for Parks Recreation Historic Sites for the year 2013. The Parks Advisory Board recommended that youth baseball, softball, and tennis rates be increased by $5. It was recommended that all other rates remain the same, and this would reflect an approximately $4,170 increase. 7.8 is to authorize a purchase order with Tribe Borough Services to purchase parts necessary to overhaul the Roderger Tower press, belt press located in the wastewater treatment plant and authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with the purchase. The belt press is located in wastewater treatment plants, about 15 years old, and due to its age, it needs major overhaul to keep it running. A failure of the belt press will result in solids back up in the plant and a possible discharge of solids into the Kentucky River. This purchase was sole sourced to Tribe Borough Services, so they're the authorized regional dealer for Roderger equipment. The amount of the purchase order is for $30,000. 7.9 is to authorize approval of amendment number four to add funds to the agreement with Hazen and Sawyer PSC for design and bidding services on phase two of a project to repair or replace the interceptor line from Swigert Avenue to the Kentucky River and authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with the amendment. The original contract and amendments one, two, and three with Hazen and Sawyer covered design, bidding, and construction oversight for phase one of the project. Amendment number four covers design and bidding services for phase two of the project. Amendment four is for not to exceed $72,200, and the total contract amount is $340,900. 7.10, to authorize additional funds to the agreement with Bell Engineering for the design of a pump station to replace the Ridgeview Pump Station and authorize the mayor to sign documents related to this project. The Ridgeview Pump Station is currently a sanitary sewer overflow. The replacement station will be designed to eliminate this overflow. This amendment will cover some redesign fees due to easement issues and include bidding, construction administration, and resident inspection fees. The amendment is for $57,450. Total project is $90,950. 7.11 is to authorize approval of an engineering agreement with Webster Environmental Associates for general services contract for odor control and corrosion services and authorize the mayor to sign all related project documents. Webster Environmental is an engineering company that specializes in treatment of odor control and corrosion that develops in sanitary sewer systems. This contract will allow the sewer department to utilize their services as needed. The total contract amount is not to exceed $25,000. 7.12 is approval of change order one to a contract with Reynolds Inliner LLC for the rehabilitation of approximately 18,000 feet of gravity sewer main in Two Creeks Eight-Inch Sewer Rehabilitation Project and authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with the project. In May 2012, the city awarded a contract to Reynolds Inliner LLC to remove excessive inflow and infiltration currently entering the sanitary sewer system in Two Creeks Project area. This project rehabilitates a pipe and mitigates several sanitary sewer overflows in the area. During the course of the project, additional defects in the sewer system have been identified for repair. These additional repairs are being performed at unit prices included in the bid where available. Other repair prices have been negotiated by the project engineer, and additional time is being included to allow the contractor to complete the additional work. The change order is for $22,250. The revised total contract is $717,250. 7.13 is to authorize the approval of amendment two to a professional services agreement with O'Brien and Gear Engineers Incorporated for the Holly Hills and Meadowview SSES project and to authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. This is SSES of the Holly Hills and Meadowview subdivision. Due to conditions in the field, GRW requested additional CCTV inspection. The sewer, sewer department also requested some additional inspection in the project area. The additional funding is in the amount of $8,500 and is being added to the contract, bring total to the, total contract amount, $176,500. 7.14 is to authorize bid award for three 2012 international dump trucks and snowplows and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. The street department requires three new dump trucks to replace older models that are being surplus due to age and wear. The city will utilize the state price contract to purchase these vehicles, and the price of these vehicles, $320,144, is submitted by Bluegrass International Trucks of Georgetown, and funds in the amount, funds are available in municipal aid account. 7.15 is to authorize purchase of a new S205 Bobcat Skid steer loader. Every kid wants one for Christmas. From Sanitation Division under 2012-2013 Kentucky Pride Fund Recycling Grant and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. Excuse me. They need a new skid loader for the recycling program. The city applied for it and was awarded funds under the Kentucky Pride Recycling Grant to purchase this equipment. City will purchase the loader through the state's price contract in the amount of $33,362.18, and the vendor for the compactor is Bobcat Enterprises Incorporated. Authorized purchase of new Marathon RH450 stationary compactor for the sanitation division under the 2012-2013 Kentucky Pride Recycling Grant. This is new stationary compactor for recycling program. City applied for it and was awarded funds under the Kentucky Pride Fund Recycling Grant to purchase this equipment. The vendor for this compactor is Municipal Equipment. Funds in the grant and aid account will be expended in the amount of $22,189. Remaining funding of $1,756 will come from the sanitation's equipment account. 7.17, to authorize approval of change order two for a contract with Instaform Technologies Incorporated for the rehabilitation of approximately 4,000 feet of sanitary sewers in Juniper Hill Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project and authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with the project. In October of 2011, the sewer department awarded a contract to Instaform Technologies, Inc., for the rehabilitation of 4,000 feet of sanitary sewers. Change order number two is the balancing change order to close out the project. Change order two was $30,258, bringing the total amount of the project to $297,146.74. 7.18 is to authorize a bid award to CC Moore Incorporated for the East Frankfurt Pool Demolition Project and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. The pool will be demolished and concrete will be recycled to use as fill in order for the site to be used for a future purpose. CC Moore was a low bidder, and funds are available through Parks and Rec account upon approval of the budget amendment. 7.19 is to authorize a bid award for cleaning services and authorize the mayor to sign all documents related to this contract. There was only one bid, and that was to McKinney's Cleaning. It was a reduction. The bid was for $2,989 a month. We previously paid $3,495 a month. 7.20 is to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with HealthSmart Benefit Solutions to provide third-party administration, TPA services, for the self-insured group health insurance plan. Wells Fargo TPA provided claim and other administrative services for the past several years. HealthSmart Benefit Solutions has acquired Wells Fargo effective January 1, 2012, and has since been providing us service. Our insurance broker solicited pricing proposals from several potential TPA providers. After reviewing the proposals, it was determined that continuing with HealthSmart would provide us with the best service and the best pricing structure. In addition to the TPA services, HealthSmart Benefit will serve as a pharmacy benefit manager beginning in 2013. This agreement includes a three-year price lock. The contract is for calendar year 2013 and may be renewed or extended for 2014 and 2015. Approximately $160,000 per year for Approximately $160,000 per year for administrative TPA services, depending on employee census and participation in various programs is what we expect to spend. In addition, pharmacy expenses under the contract are estimated to be at $550,000 per year, but could vary based on pharmacy usage by this plan. This plan offers rebates and offering generic drug utilization, and funds are in budget. 7.21 is authorized purchase of a 27 cubic yard high compact compaction automated garbage packer. Municipal Equipment had the low bid submitted an amount of $229,200 for a 2012 Mack chassis and a curved tender 27-yard auto loader garbage packer. It was the best bid that they received. It's a smaller truck, sturdier packer body, the lift arm exceeds the specifications required for lifting weight, and Municipal Equipment has a proven and past service record with the city of Frankfurt. And the funds are in the sanitation division equipment account. 7.22, authorize a bid award for roof repair contract of the transit building roof to Cal Roof Roofing and Sheet Metal, and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. The proposed roof project has a 20-year warranty, and the design was approved by the city's consultant, David Banks. The Office of Transportation Delivery concurs with the awarding, concurs with awarding the bid to Cal Roof Roofing and Sheet Metal, and there are grant, and provide grant funds. Funds will be spent from Transportation Improvement Account and be reimbursed with grant funds. And that is, let's see, do I continue with personnel? 7.23 Personnel. Retirement of Harry Cecil Graves, Public Works Sanitation, and authorized payment of all accrued lead, and retirement of Jeff Hackbark, Public Works Director, authorized payment of all accrued lead. And next, that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay, do you have a motion obtained to approve or consent, Mr. Turner? Yes, Mr. Turner, give us a second.
I'll second it.
Let me come in, so call the roll, please.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, so the consent count is approved. Next on the agenda are board appointments. Now, for the Forestry Advisory Board, I have three nominations for you to, I'd like for you to consider if you would at one time. This is reappointment of Anita Wright to a term ending 5/8/15, reappointment of John Abel to a term ending 5/8/15, and reappointment of Gene Henry to a term ending 5/8/15. Do I give a motion for approval? Mr. May, give us a second. Okay.
Mr. LeBauer.
Call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, so the Forestry Advisory Board is appointed. Now, 8.2 is a recommendation for reappointment to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, and recommending reappointment of Bruce Rankin to a term ending 7/1/16. Do you have a motion for this?
I'd like to move to approve the appointment and just say that I think I had the luxury of serving with Bruce on the Board of Zoning Adjustment. He does a good job, and I'm happy to move to reappoint him.
Okay, thank you. Give us a second. Mr. May, okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, so the Board of Zoning Adjustment is approved. Next is old business. There being none, have this here, is invited, old business.
This is a real small piece there. I don't know, I see Jules in the back. This is a for IT. When the, gosh, was it two years ago, three years ago, did the city start recording our work sessions and, well, all of our meetings with digital audio? And I know the city has this updated website that's really, I think we all agree, is a lot more user-friendly and is really serving the city well. On the previous website, on the older website, there was a way to link to all of the audio recordings that the city had at that point from, what was it, June? I can't, I can't think. From about 2009, you know, onward. I know we've talked, we've talked about this, but is there, is there a way to link to those audio recordings? Those old audio recordings now from the new site?
Yeah, we can link it, but currently the, the new website we have uses a SoundCloud, which is a subscription base, and you can actually watch the, or you can listen to the audio directly from the website. And the subscription we have is a limited number of hours, and I have talked to Mike and see if we can just download the file itself, and then you can just, instead of listening directly from the website, you can just link it.
And that is how I worked on the old website. You would have to download it.
Yeah, if that's okay, I'll talk to Mike to just dump all of the audio files there, and then just create a link, and then you can just download it, rather than listening directly from the website. Because currently, right now, all you have to do is download the audio file, and you can technically listen directly from the browser itself. But we have limited number of hours. I think the, it's a paid subscription base, and we have only like, I think, like five hours amount of audio to put there.
Personally, I'm happy with it just being linked and downloadable without going into the subscription service. Without objection, I feel like the more public records we can get, we can give the public access to on the internet, the less work that is for our staff in the long run.
Okay, we'll, we'll do it tomorrow. We'll create the files and link it.
Thanks, Jules.
Any other old business thing?
For anybody who hasn't been on the city's website lately, it is first-class website, and they should get on there and check it out. The RIT department has done an outstanding job putting that together, so I just wanted to point that out for anybody watching at home.
Down now to new business, and Mr. May?
We have audit presentation. Mr. Dawson, if you please come up. We have a guest from Mount Joy Chilton and Medley. If commissioners would like to refer to their draft copies that we provided.
As purported last week, we've just completed the audit for, audit just recently, the last couple of weeks, and it's a pleasure to introduce Trish Featherston to you with Mount Joy Chilton and Medley tonight.
Trish is gonna walk through the audit report and answer any questions and make, and just point out some major items with you, so.
Thank you, Trish.
Well, hello, everyone. I'm Trish Featherston. I'm a partner at Mount Joy Chilton and Medley, head of our Government Services Group out of Lexington. And just, did everyone bring their draft, or I brought some additional? Would you need one?
I didn't get my own box.
You do?
I do need one, please.
All right, the exciting document, the audited financial statements for the city of Frankfurt. Well, I'm happy to report that we came in, and this is the second year that Mount Joy Chilton and Medley has done the audit, and I want to thank all of you for engaging us to do that. I think the second year is always a little easier. We came in and, as we were engaged to come in as scheduled, completed the audit as scheduled. I think that's a good thing to report, and, and here we are with our final document. So what I was gonna do is just kind of go, lead you through this document, and I'm gonna give you page numbers to go by. I know it's quite voluminous. I know that you've had the draft, so if you have any questions, just ask me at any point. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on the numbers. I'm just going to kind of give the overview, if that's okay. Okay?
Thank you.
So, if you want to move to page one and two, start audit report on the financial statements. And again, happy to report we have a clean audit opinion or unqualified audit opinion. We also report, we also issued two government reports, governmental auditing reports, and these both are clean opinions as well, or clean reports. They're basically in the back of the document. We're required to issue those, first of all, because you're a governmental entity; second of all, because you receive over $500,000 or expend over $500,000 of federal funds. So we, we have, we report under the Single Audit Act for the city of Frankfurt, and we'll get to that in the back of the document, but some additional work as auditors because of the governmental nature. Next, on pages three through seven, you'll find the, what we call the MDNA, Management's Discussion and Analysis. This is the only place in the governmental financial statements that you will find comparative data. This is written by management, Steve and his group, and again, a good overview of the year and a comparison to prior years. So I would recommend, if you haven't read that, that, that really is one of the best overviews.
Can we ask a question real quick?
Sure.
On page seven, just for clarity, draft for discussion only covers, but is that a decrease or an increase on the, you know, economic factors for next year's budget? The city of Frankfurt, Kentucky's?
Oh, is it, is your draft stamp over that has decreased?
Just making sure. Thank you.
So on to page eight. This is the government-wide statement of net assets. This is the only statement that is reported on the full accrual method of accounting. So this statement reports your, all the, what I call the fixed assets, the bricks, the infrastructure, and everything of the city, and, and the debt related to those, the bonds and, and capital leases and any bank loans. And it's broken down in a columnar format, as you can see, governmental activities, which are your general, your general government, your police and fire, and all the kind of general-type governmental activities. The business-type activities are your, is your sewer fund. So that's a differentiation there, and then again, the total is the total government-wide view. So if you drop down to your total net assets on that page, you can see the general government or governmental activities have $57.8 million in net assets, the sewer fund at $55.9 million in net assets. The next statement is your statement of activities on page nine. It also is on the full accrual method of accounting, and it's kind of a funny statement as it reports expenses at the top and revenues kind of at the bottom. So if you kind of drop down to three-quarters of the way down the page, you can see the change in net assets, and again, for your general governmental activities, it was a decrease in net assets of $284,000, and your sewer fund had a positive increase in net assets of $2.8 million under the full accrual method of accounting. Pages 10 and 11 and 12 are basically your, the same statements but on the modified accrual of accounting. See, you're so lucky, you get two, two types of statements since you're a government. Again, these are not going to report the fixed assets and the related debt. This is basically modified accrual, so you've got your accounts receivable and accounts payable on here, but not fixed assets and debt. Broken down, again, general fund and other governmental funds. So your sewer fund is also not accounted for here on this statement. It is actually accounted for as a proprietary fund on another statement. So again, drop down on page 10 to your total liabilities and fund balances. $21.4 million in the general fund, $5.9 million in all of your other governmental funds. So grand total of $27 million of fund balances and liabilities in all of your governmental funds.
I've got a question on that page. That's, so that's a slight increase over the last year of what was reported, or was that two years ago? No, that's 2011. The unassigned funds under fund balances, under liabilities and fund balances, that $9.1 million, exactly what does that number represent? I mean, is that what we would consider our reserve? That's what I thought.
Yeah, I was, I can just, you know, Jay, last year was $9,105,006, if you're keeping track.
Yeah.
And it's about $70,000, $77,000 greater this year, is $9,182,401,5 this year.
Okay. I'm glad the record does, does reflect that. I mean, we've had faults. We've heard a lot of discussion over the last couple of years about the commission depleting the reserves and spending more money than we've taken in, and it's good to see that the actual record reflects that we actually have experienced growth in the reserves over the last, over the last couple of years. And I remind the commission, and I know this has all been said before, when we took office, the city had $8.5 million in reserve when we received this report two years ago. So I just think that's a, congratulations are in order. I know a lot of cities have had a really hard time, but.
Especially considering the economy, that these numbers don't lie.
Question. Is there someplace in here that will show like this last year, the total revenues that we brought in and how much we spent?
Well, from.
Is there a place, a page in here that would show that amount?
If you go to page 12.
And would it show you, would there be a place in there to show that the, some of the additional income that shows in the balance came from sewer contributions and then also from 911?
Yes.
And not from revenue that normally would have paid for these things?
I think if you go to page 12 and, and you look at your total governmental funds, you'll see total revenues, if you're on page 12, if you follow me on the total revenue line, of $32.5 million, go all the way to the right. That's the total revenues for the year ended June 30, 2012.
Now, where is this now?
Page 12.
At the top there?
If you come down, you see on the description, total revenue.
Okay, I got you, yes.
That's the total revenues for the city on a modified accrual basis. And then you'll see total expenditures come down again to the next kind of subtotal of $32.1 million. And that, that comes to a positive $344,000 where your revenues exceeded your expenses, and then drop down and you can see the transfers in that next section. There was $600,000 transferred in. There was $300,000 transferred out, so you had a net 300. So the net change in the fund balances was $715,000. So that is really the net, the net number for the city.
I just wanted to make is, in actual revenue that we bring in through taxes and what have you, and extra expenditures, we spent more than what we brought in, except for the transfer.
In the general governmental fund, yes. In the general governmental fund, you did.
That's all I wanted to make sure.
And that would be in the column general.
Right.
If you take your 30 million, 30.9 million of revenues in that column, less 31.2, and that was a deficiency of $343,000. Purely revenues brought in, expenses out for the general, general fund.
Oh, we are, we are correct in understanding that the $6 million in other governmental funds did go in, does go into the city's general fund?
Yeah.
Or at least gets spent, is that, that's not?
Yeah, we're trying, we might need a transfer.
It's trans, the transfers.
$300,000 out of sewer fund and $300,000 of E911 to shore up the.
And that's the 600,000 there, transfers in.
Yeah, it's in the first column there, so.
Sure.
And I might, I might state where we are this year so far. You know, we're not having any problem transferring the $300,000 out of sewer fund, but we've, as you know, last year we purchased some equipment out of E911, and we kind of depleted that fund down, so we weren't able to make transfer this quarter. fund down, so we weren't able to make transfer this quarter. Typically, the transfer is $75,000 per quarter to make up the $300,000 coming from E911. But we made the first quarter transfer, and we just didn't have enough funds to make the second quarter transfer. So we may or may not be able to pin all that fund, you know, going forward to shore up the...
The general.
The general fund.
Any other questions? Pages 14 and 15 are the statements for the sewer fund, showing them, showing the sewer fund separate, as a separate fund, or a proprietary fund than it is. You can see it has total net assets of $55.9 million, I think I mentioned that earlier. And then on page 15 is the statement of revenues and expenditures for the sewer fund on a standalone basis. And you can see it brings in $10.8 million of revenue, expended $7.1 million for expenses, had operating income of $3.6 million, and had other non-operating items, and the transfer out to the general fund, bringing its net change to be the $2.8 million I mentioned earlier.
Sure. And so that, and so that $2.8 million increase in the sewer fund, that does, that obviously reflects the, the portion that was used to shore up the general fund.
Yeah, the transfer out.
So in other words, the general fund and the sewer fund are both larger than they were a year ago.
The statement on page 18 and 19 are your statements for your fiduciary funds and your fiduciary net assets, and that includes the police and fire retirement fund, basically. Those are not reflected in the city's financials.
Got one quick question. It blocked out the line that says held in trust for pension benefits on page 18. What is that number?
About $45,458,000.
Okay, that's right.
Sixty.
Same? Oh, it's just the same?
Yeah, I got you.
Did you get it? $5,458 million?
Oh, yeah.
And $60 and 47 cents. You didn't put the 47 cents. I'm just kidding you.
See?
Number jokes.
These are jokes.
You knew it was coming.
Okay, pages 20 through 37 are our notes to the financials. Again, it gives you lots of detail about all these accounts. Many of those, you know, have not, same disclosures as were required last year. I don't think there are any new required disclosures, so all those are consistent. Pages 38 through 42, 40, let's see, which are required supplementary information. 38 through 40 are required supplementary, supplementary information. Page 38, I think, is the start of a, of a statement that all of you would be interested in. This is your budget to actual for the general fund. Again, a required statement. You can see how the actuals turned out compared to budget. And then there's combining statements, again, a lot more detail, that start on page 41 through 46. And then page 47 starts the, the government audit reports that I mentioned earlier. Page 51 is your schedule of federal awards, details all the amounts of the federal grants that you, that the city received, and, and the total, which is $1.3 million. Actually, the city expended that amount of federal money. The largest being, the monies from the Department of Transportation. We did have one deficiency that we are reporting on page 55, and it is related to the fixed asset accounting of fixed assets and dispositions, and the fact that there wasn't or isn't a real, true software product used last year. We've discussed this with Steve, and he's actually, I think, the, the software's been purchased and is in the, in the process of being implemented.
The significant deficiencies that were identified are not considered to be material weaknesses. Has already been communicated to the commission? I believe, is that what's, that is what's already been communicated?
Senator, you ought to do a management report later on, right? We'll submit management report.
Uh-huh. Actually, your, your response is in here as well.
Yeah, yeah, my response is on page, you get the value.
Oh, I see. Yes.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I thought it was.
We purchased that software, obviously, we already kind of...
That's what I figured it was, I just wanted to check.
It is.
Anyone else want to raise any question, or?
Thank you very much.
I just have one notation. Back on page 36, during our earlier discussion today, Steve and I noted the, about the city's required withholding in match for pension obligations.
You want to, you want to address that, Steve? Sure.
Yeah, just, just, you know, page 36, you might be interested in the middle of the page there. It's regarding our city ER's contributions that we made over the last three years. You can see it's gone from $4,675 in 2010, to, last year was $5,185. So it's gone up about $170,000 on the average per year. That's one thing that's really driving a lot of our costs. We've been discussing this along with healthcare, these are two big cost drivers, but this is a primary cost driver, and, you know, state legislatures addressed, and addressed that, it's one of the key issues this year, but...
On the news, on, on the pension fund in Kentucky just keeps getting worse and worse every time we look at it. Let's hope the legislature comes up with a solution.
Yeah.
Right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Trish. Good job, thank you.
Hey, now, is there any other new business you brought for the commission? If not, I'm down to adjournment.
I believe that's my call. I will move from here.
You have a second.
Count on Michael.
Okay, Mr. May, this is a second, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yeah.[1788.36]